Oh, good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, here in Palm Desert. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every injustice for all. Roll call, please.
Good morning. Whoa, is this on? It is on. Okay. Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Yeah, here.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I know we, I guess we have two items that are being pulled from today's agenda. Those are five.
Oh, go ahead.
Five E?
Echo.
Echo. And, and seven?
Bravo.
B.
B.
Correct.
And in regard to seven B, we just wanted to do a little more work to confirm and make sure that we're in, you know, compliance with the conflict interest rules and get some direction, and we'll bring that back.
Yeah.
I think we'll bring them both back, but.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I was only speaking of the one.
Yeah. Are there any other adjustments to today's agenda?
Not that I'm aware of, sir. We should be good to go.
Yeah. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? I know we have at least one member of the public out there.
We could, at this time, make some introductions.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, I think we have Thomas West, who's our new Assistant Director for Sanitation.
Oh.
So, Thomas, just if you wouldn't mind just standing.
Good morning.
You can come and make comments if you want.
Yeah, we met him last year.
Poor guy. You don't have to.
Three minutes, three minutes apply.
No, he's already done, he's already done that.
And then we have Celeste Moses, who's joining us as our new Executive Assistant.
Great.
Hello.
Nice to see you, Celeste.
Anybody else that I, been here for, since our last meeting at the Rock?
Robert Chang.
Yeah, nice to see you, Robert.
Haven't changed much. Thank you, sir, that's it.
So, no public comment, we'll move on. So, the consent calendar is five A through G minus the item E. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Passed five oh. And then action on to seven A. This is the purchase of property. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. So, this is a purchase and sale agreement with one of the property owners, Jamesy Burca. It's for a point four-three acre parcel. The total cost of the request is sixty-three hundred and eighty dollars, and this is necessary for the North Cathedral City Regional Flood Control Project. If you would like additional information, I'm happy to provide it, but it's fairly straightforward, I think.
Carrie, I don't have any questions, but I'm just curious about the the statement in the staff report that says that we're headed for a bond issuance in two thousand and twenty-six? Are we, is that still our target date?
That was one of the discussions that we had had. I, that would be a finance question.
Is there somebody from finance here that can answer that? Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Yes, we are still anticipating to do a bond issuance in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, early twenty-five.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Passed five oh. And then on to seven C, which is the Hexavalent Chromium Treatment Evaluation Project. Good morning, Zoe.
Hi.
Good morning.
Hello.
It's it's red.
Is it red? Is it working?
Touch, touch anything near the bottom. There it is.
There we go. So, good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This item consists of requesting approval to execute Task Order Number One to the Professional Service Agreement with Westios and Partners Corona and Confluence to complete work related to the implementation, to the implementation or continued study of stanus chloride without filtration in the ID eight, number eight system, as well as adopting a budget amendment resolution to fund this effort. So, a quick, I put together a little, very brief timeline of compliance with the Chromium, Hexavalent Chromium MCL. I'm not going to go into detail with this, but I did want to point out a few things that are relevant to this item. In September of two thousand and twenty-second, CBWD submitted a permit amendment for IDA to begin using stanus chloride without filtration. CBWD heard back from Department of Drinking Water approximately a year later, basically saying, we're not going to approve moving forward with a permit amendment, but we are authorizing a longer-term, full-scale implementation. But in addition to that, we are requesting that you do some additional studies, such as a pipe rig study in developing additional protocols for home sampling, where before, the sampling had been in the distribution system. They are asking that we look at the impacts within customer homes, similar to the leading copper rule. So, in March of two thousand and twenty-four, we worked with the same partners, Westios, Corona and Confluence, to develop the shape of that study, as well as additional information that was needed to address what DDW expressed were uncertainties with the use of stanus chloride without filtration. And that was submitted to Department of Drinking Water, and a couple of months later, in May, we received approval of that work plan. So, the full work plan now includes this pipe rig study, some what are called fill-in dump studies, looking at our actual harvested pipe, the additional customer sampling, as well as the work plan that was submitted for the full-scale implementation. So, this item today consists of implementing that additional work, beginning with the fabrication of the pipe rig, the study, the fill-in dump studies, some scale analysis, so things that were approved by the Department of Drinking Water to allow us to proceed with that demonstration in our ID eight system. So, as you're all probably aware, in April, the state moved forward with adopting the MCL for Hexavalent Chromium, again, being set at ten micrograms per liter. And so now we're, you know, it, it takes effect in October, and so we are in that full moving forward with developing CBWD's compliance approach. And so what does that compliance path look like? We are doing a dual path. Number one, we are still looking to fill those expressed data gaps and uncertainties in the use of stanus chloride without filtration, beginning with the bench scale and pipe rig studies that this item is looking to fund. And then, if that is successful, then moving to the longer-term, full-scale demonstration. At the same time, we are working with the same consultants to look at other treatment and non-treatment options. That will result, as was previously approved by the board, in an update to our two thousand and fifteen plan. And that update to that report is scheduled to be finished at the beginning of January. So, with that, staff recommendation is that Task Order Number One, in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, be approved, as well as authorizing additional expenditures, including a five percent contingency, project management and district labor that will need to be contributed to this effort, the purchase of chemicals, materials and supplies, and then additional laboratory analysis for the scale testing. And that the board adopt a budget amendment resolution to increase the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five by that total amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven. I'm happy to answer any questions, but other, otherwise, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. You know what, just, I'm sure we're all thinking is, you know, we, we submit something and it takes them a year to reply, and yet, here we have to do all this work in such a short period of time. And to me, it, it, I mean, I see the timeline, but is it realistic that we can get, even if, even if everything goes right, is it realistic that we can get this done under the timeline that's currently laid out?
So, the, the actual compliance period before you're considered out of compliance is two years for our larger COE system. Pardon me. Yes, two years and three years for our ID eight system.
Right.
I think if we're successful with the pipe rig study and move forward to full-scale demonstration, and that is successful, there is a possibility that we can meet compliance in ID eight within the allowed three years. But when you look at the whole, you know, at the whole map of compliance and all the things that need to happen, I think that we all realize and have been providing feedback that the allowed compliance time period is not sufficient. Even, even from a procedural perspective, the fact that you have to submit a compliance plan to them, get that approved, and then, you know, move forward with an implementation plan, get that approved, do some demonstration. I think that the feeling of the industry as a whole is that, you know, while recognizing that they are trying to allow for a compliance period, it is not reasonable. It is not a reasonable expectation that any system, particularly one like ours, which I skipped over, that we have, as of our latest testing, approximately thirty wells that will be above the MCL. It is not a reasonable expectation that we will be able to comply within those compliance time periods, particularly in our bigger COE system.
Are the districts going to get together and go to the board and ask for some additional time?
So, we have done that, and their response during meetings is that they'll work with us in the communication with the public, but when asked very directly, will we be out of compliance if we can't do it by X date? Their answer was, well, yes, Sid Wiss will show that you're out of compliance. So, there's been other parallel efforts on the legislative front. Unfortunately, that did not move forward with this last session, but I believe that there are efforts underway to plan how we can approach this with the next session. But as far as State Board is concerned, directly talking to them has not yielded any success, besides, well, this rule allows for some compliance period, even if at the same time, they acknowledge that that might be a challenge for systems like CBWD and other agencies in the Coachella Valley, where a, a very high percentage, and for some, a hundred percent of wells are, are going to be impacted.
Yeah, so to that question, we were working with somebody, Member Garcia, to see if he could move similar legislation like the one that Senator Wessel had put in a few years before. It was kind of late, late in the session, so it was really hard. And one of the things that his office kept hearing was that this could be something that could be taken care of administratively by the Water Board. And so we had a meeting with them to ask them, was this true? Because we haven't heard that as agencies. And the answer was, no, the, the rule's kind of baked in, so we don't have the jurisdiction to change the rule. The rule is the rule. And so, that gave us clear indication that this couldn't really change without legislation. And so, but by that time, it was kind of too late in the session. And so that was the reason why we had that campaign with, with the gathering of the, the letter that we sent out. I think we did really well on that. We had over, what, like twenty, twenty-five agencies sign up. Part of the strategy was that, that we would find other, smaller systems, disadvantaged-type systems that provided service to disadvantaged communities. And the message we were getting is that we needed to find a way to make this a priority for some of the folks out in the Central Valley. And so, part of the strategy was finding folks like, you know, in Watsonville, they have the same area, the same issues, things like that. And, and so I think we haven't left that. I think you're going to come back next session and try to reintroduce this. So, I think there's still some, there's still some opportunity there. Just a matter of finding who the author could be, or.
Right. And I think it's, it's again, putting together a coalition of water agencies. We had twenty-five agencies and water organizations that supported the late-session legislation, but it was just too late in the session to really get something done. We did have SB ten sixty-five earlier in the legislative session that was authored by Senator Padilla, but he pulled that legislation because he had other priorities that he needed to get through committees. So, we will pursue this in the upcoming legislative session, and we're already beginning to have conversations about what that legislation might look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need that.
So, that's kind of the political side. So, from the, the physical nature of treatment, I mean, obviously, you can, you can do treatment through ion exchange or some other process, processes that, that, that take care of this. And, and we're, we're still pursuing the stanus chloride, which I think is very appropriate, because it's a, a process that is fundamentally, you know, less expensive and, but, you know, there are some, do you filter, do you non-filter? I mean, there's some issues like that. But will this, will this study? I mean, this, you know, if this study, let's say, the pipe rig study and the, and the the study we're going to do, the bench testing, if it's not successful, then are we just right back where we started from in terms of, you know, other more expensive studies? And then what's the likelihood of success here, I guess?
So, addressing the first question, I think, you know, in a nutshell, if stanus without filtration is not successful, we are back at looking at treatment options, but we've expanded that to also look at, you know, a very holistic approach, see what has changed, both on the treatment front, but also in our distribution system, in our water demand. So, we're doing a very thorough update of that two thousand and fifteen plan to try to maximize benefit and lower cost. And we'll share that information. We'll do a presentation to the board when that is finished in early January. But yes, that would be the fallback option. Again, we're looking, you know, just to jokingly, we're looking under every rock at every approach that we can take to minimize the overall cost, while at the same time, bringing added benefits to our domestic distribution system.
Okay.
Are all twenty-five districts trying to do something? Or are they waiting for us?
At, at this point, every district is doing something. Every, every single district that I'm aware of has contracted with Corona, Indio, Coachella Water Authority, Mission Springs Water District, to go down a similar path. I think that they are waiting. If, if I would say that if there's anything that they're waiting on us is, they are curious to see how the stanus studies, stanus without filtration studies pan out. But every agency, to the best of my knowledge, has moved forward with a similar approach of looking at, you know, the, the full menu of options that are available, because that.
Why aren't we doing it like that? Why aren't we sharing the cost? Why aren't we all banding together and, and having one contract with one, with this company and, and doing one test? Because is it going to be the same?
I, I think every distribution system is different. The options that are available to folks are different. For example, we have areas of our, of our service area that are lower in chrom. So, we're looking at a variety of options where other, you know, other areas, for example, I think, City of Coachella, every well is impacted. And they have a very different distribution system. So, I think when it comes to looking at a full compliance plan, and each agency's going to have to submit a compliance plan, that those are the activities that really each agency needs, needs to take on. Now, we are information sharing between the agencies, but the only agency that's doing a stanus without filtration demonstration, the only one that has gotten the approval from DDW to do that, is CBWD. So, there, there's a lot of different things going on, because ultimately, the responsibility is on each public water system to comply. So, each one needs to look holistically at what options are available to them.
Zoe, so, a lot of good information. Following up on some of the questions, are we waiting to hit some sort of trigger in the exploring of the standards before we start any other approach, design? Or are we already kind of in a path for an alternative method that we're scratching at? Or we won't even begin that until maybe six months from now, a year from now? And then the other question is, I know that CBWD has, has had meetings with at least some of the other local agencies, understanding that everybody's contracting with Corona, and I think to explore the possibilities of cost sharing and, and approach. Is that something that, that you're still pursuing? Or, or is this something that, that you're just going to take on from a kind of a CBWD standalone project? Or you're still thinking about it?
So, I'll, I'll address the timeline first. And in answering that, I'm going to try to go back to the question of Board Member Nelson that I didn't address, which is about success of stanus chloride without filtration. Look, let's be honest. In our conversations with Department of Drinking Water, they've basically flat-out come out and said, we don't think that this is going to work. And there have been studies, since our studies back in two thousand and seventeen, that indicate, and, that indicate that when you look at the end-of-pipe customer, that there is increased turbidity in that, in that particular system. Now, this doesn't mean that this is what we're going to find in the system, but saying that there's a lot of uncertainties and that there's a big barrier to overcome. So, trying to set expectations adequately. But some of the recent testing in, I believe it was Dixon, when they tried to test end-of-pipe, they were seeing high turbidity. And that high turbidity was associated with the chrome three going into particulate. And so, some of their sampling, the chrome six was low enough to meet the MCL, but at times, they were exceeding the total chromium MCL of fifty micrograms per liter. So, there is a large barrier to be overcome. This is part of the reason why we brought this excellent team together. And I have to say that DDW said, you know, your plan is fantastic. It addresses everything that we want to see addressed. But we're going to have to, you know, cross each of those barriers successfully. So, the pipe rig study seemed the best place to start, because it is a contained study, rather than going to the full-scale demonstration. That has been set up with checkpoints. So, the first checkpoint, and the first likely time that we'll be reporting back to the board, with, so far, we're having success, or we've run into issues, is going to be January. So, what is it, approximately five months? So, we've put these different gate checks in place, and, you know, hopefully, we can be successful at each step, because this would be the most affordable compliance approach. But I, I have to be honest in reporting back both what other studies have found, which has increased the nervousness from DDW, as well as just their perspective coming into this, that there's just so much uncertainty that they're, you know, they're setting, they're going to set the bar really, really high. So, in terms of cost sharing, we're still looking for funding opportunities. We're open to cost sharing. We've been having, you know, we've had two meetings now with agencies that are similarly challenged in terms of compliance. And I, I would say, with the exception of Coachella Water Authority, the other agencies were like, well, we just want to wait to see what happens with stanus chloride without filtration. And we're just in a quick timeline to move forward with this. So, I think that part of it, you know, at this time, appears that it's going to be self-funded. So, there's been, you know, there's been limited traction in terms of getting buy-off on cost sharing on that piece.
Okay.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll, I'll add, I, I think that everybody has their own costs that they're having to take on to produce their full compliance. So, the, the stanus as before, stanus without filtration, really is a CBW, is currently, and is planned to be a CBWD-led effort.
Zoe, in, in the pipe rig study, are we, are we actually taking pipe out of the system and then developing like a, like a little bench test that had, that's using the, the, the exact pipe in our system that will then translate over on scale to, to the district? How does that work? Because the only reason why I'm asking is that we did some of these studies before, and then, you know, we just didn't carry it far enough for cost reasons, and we didn't have a, we didn't have this MCL. So, how, how does the pipe rig study answer some of these questions without, you know, doing this study actually in the system?
So, the, the pipe rig study goes beyond bench scale. This is actually going to be at one of our IDA well sites, and it'll be runs of pipe that are run as if it was a distribution system and are sampled at a high frequency. So, it is intended to be, you know, essentially a, a model of what our larger distribution system, and it normally goes bench scale, pipe rig, full-scale demonstration. The design of the pipe rig study gets at one of DDW's main requests was, we want to see how this works out in this test environment using the same materials that are in your distribution system. So, we've done an inventory of those materials, took advantage of the, the recent requirement to do lead service line testing, to get more robust data on what's on the distribu, pardon me, on the customer side. And then we know from our own records what's in the distribution system.
Yeah.
And then, I'll comment. Uh and then uh I'll comment that because. DDW has expressed uh, you know, such a lack in belief that. Status without filtration will ultimately work, that the work that we did um. Since the board approved it, I believe it was in February through the submittal in March. It was very thorough, uh not only did we bring a consultant team that has expertise in. Distribution system, home plumbing, uh in chemistry, in design, but they also had a technical advisory committee. So in that technical advisory committee reviewed everything, uh they created a risk matrix. And were able to really show to DDW how each thing that we're planning on doing addresses one of the areas of uncertainty. So I think that we have the best plan to be able, if we're successful, to be able to go to them and say, look. We've done everything in this matrix, it's been successful, that it this addresses this uncertainty, this addresses this uncertainty. But again, we're gonna need to work through that uh over the next twelve months or so.
Make one last comment, uh so. I I know the city's still probably interested in partnering up, partnering up and whatever opportunity there is and. I think the only thing that that uh would need to be figured out is I think your pipe rig is gonna be specific to your. Materials and service lines, things like that, so. Those might not match the other agencies.
And also to ideate, um so that's.
Yeah, and so um as I mentioned, uh you're aware the city has a a grant that it needs to use to answer these questions. And so there's an opportunity there if um I think you still wanna scratch at it. Um and uh Corona is aware of that also, so. Kind of.
Yes, and you know, from my perspective, uh. For the systems that are interested in exploring status chlori- without filtration. The best thing that they can do is also move uh to a pipe rig study with their materials and distribution system, water quality. Because holistically, if we can show multiple studies indicating that this works, that's really uh. Where the story strengthens and where. Uh the local agencies can really support each other in conversations with DDW.
That's a good point, thank you.
Yeah, you know, what what you bring up about the systems being different, I mean, it's just a reality of, you know, how they're built, right? And then what the what the homeowners are um, and this, you know, Jim, I I don't know. If you could work with legal at all, but I mean, if there's an opportunity to, you know, through this. Process that we're doing, if we write some sort of agreement with our contractors that uh uh that. Uh says that um. Our studies that come up with proprietary type solutions uh would be uh. Could be subject to reimbursement, not not money making, but reimbursement uh if other agencies uh. Uh use uh this product as, I you know, I don't know how you do that, but. But um you know, Jeff, you might give some thought to this in terms of trying to recoup some of our investment, because from what I hear. In the group is that uh hey, we're going alone and you know, it's costing us a lot of money. Uh but if there, you know, if there's some post, you know, if you look at it after the fact, you know, we might be able to recoup some of that money.
And I do believe that our formatted contracts do provide for this district to maintain its proprietary ownership of that. So working with other agencies by way of an agreement to share the compensation costs, certainly something we can look into.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Zoe, I have a question, um maybe you or somebody else can answer this, so. Uh I thought there was a provision somewhere that uh obligates a state. To help us pay for these costs, study or implementation if it's mandated by the state, which it clearly is. So is there not, is that not something that we're getting um state funding for? Is this not considered a mandate, and if it is, why, why, do you know why the state may not be participating?
So I can, I can try to answer that as best I can, uh. Uh and I believe that Vice President Estrada might also have some comments on this particular item, not to put him on the spot. Uh so first of all, the the universe of funding. Uh hexavalium chromium MCL is only state MCL. So that closes the door to a lot of uh the the typical federal funding uh avenues. Uh the state has been talking about um. Finding uh or providing funding particularly for disadvantaged communities and small water systems. But to the best of my knowledge, to the state, it's not as if they've identified a funding pot. And said, we're gonna release it on X date. So will will they be looking uh to um identify or you know pinpoint? Funding particularly for disadvantaged communities and small water systems. I think that that is their intent, and I think one of the challenges in a recent meeting. That I was uh that I attended regarding funding is that a lot of the funding that the state now has for drinking water. It's federal, uh and so it identified that it was earmarked for emerging contaminants. Um PFOS, uh one, two, three TCP manganese. And so on that call, the person speaking was clear that that funding may not be available um. To help fund uh treatment with chromium, uh hexavalium chromium. But I've also heard that they're trying to get creative uh about how to make that funding available. Uh and just recently, actually within the last week or so. The feds announced that uh after finishing a risk assessment on chromium six. They are going to uh begin a rulemaking process. And one can hope that if the stars align, then that could move. Chrome six to an emerging contaminant, and then that would free some funding. But this is all me just trying to get um a read on the full landscape. Uh there isn't a pot of money in a for sure that has been identified, I think that there's just efforts. To try to find a way to fund this, knowing what the cost to the state is gonna be, how some particular systems are gonna be. Tremendously impacted, uh but as of yet, I haven't received an email with. Hey, this funding's gonna be available, or hey, uh there's this competitive pot, uh get ready to put in your application.
I'll just say that, yeah, in general, that's what's going on, and even the funding that's available at the state. Seems to be prioritized for systems that are already failing. And so the question to the state has been, well. All these systems now are at risk of failing, and a lot of them are probably gonna fail because of the compliance period. And are you gonna wait for these systems to fail and be out of compliance before you can? Allocate some funding to get them out of compliance, to get them into back into compliance. And so they know that that's a problem, so they're trying to at least brainstorm about how they could, if there is money. Somewhere in a pot which they haven't identified, that they could use to prevent you from getting. Uh out of compliance versus waiting for you to get out of compliance, and so. I think, yes, um the pots that have been identified are oversubscribed with other priorities and issues. So it's gonna be hard to then notch out another thing. But I I had heard that, I think in the bond, there is some money that was specifically called out. For chromium six, I I'm not, I I'm not too sure of that, but at least that's something that I had heard. Um so maybe you ought to look at the language in the bond, but but I had heard that there was some uh money that was set aside, maybe not a big pot. But but at least the pot that was specific to chromium six.
I will look into that, I had not heard that as we've been uh getting reports on the bomb, but I'll 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 look into that and. Make sure that I'm fully aware.
Alright, so we still have an action item before us and. Despite all the uncertainty, I think it's worth it to to go forward, I mean, it's our best option if if it works.
I do as well, John, and I'll I'll move the um item for a second.
Thank you, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe.
On to finance. ERP.
Hi, good morning.
Oh, I'm like, what's that sound? Are we taking off?
Uh good morning, President Powell, uh members of the board, my name is John Miller, I'm the chairman and contracts manager here at Coachella Valley Water District. Um I'm a longtime listener, but first time at the podium, so I'm gonna try to get through this as best that I can. So what I have in front of you today is an action item where we are requesting approval of contracts for the enterprise resource planning. And utility billing customer information system, otherwise known moving forward as the ERP system. Just to give you a little bit of background and history um on this is, this has been in the works for a while now, starting back in twenty nineteen. Um we brought to the board uh. A consultant agreement for a strategic assessment and gap analysis on our current ERP system. And utility billing CIS, uh and so fast forwarding up to where we're at today. This was brought back to you um most recently on July ninth of twenty twenty four. It was an informational item that was presented regarding uh the project status and proposed recommendations for the ERP system. So currently, as you know, the system that we have is, it's outdated, um we're having integration issues. Um where the the data and the reporting from it is is really um cumbersome to get. And the data really isn't um that accurate, so um those are the issues that we're having in addition to um our current provider, Central Square. Uh not being um supporting the system, so we needed to go out and we needed to look for a new system. So going out to bid, what we did look for and the overall goal was to find a system that was. A cloud-based, commercial, off-the-shelf product where there was gonna be no serious technical changes to the software. Um we would have to adapt to the software type thing, and I and I believe that we have accomplished that through this RFP process. Just to give you a a little bit more background on the request for proposal process. Back in July of twenty twenty three, we issued RFP twenty twenty three dash twenty five. For the ERP utility billing procurement and selection services. Uh the RFP was advertised via our our um e-bidding platform, Planet Bids. And upon the closing date and time of the RFP, we received a total of uh ten proposals. At that time, um the proposals were evaluated by um the evaluation committee com- um consisting of members from. Um the. Public affairs and customer experience, engineering, operations, human resource, information systems and finance. Um the technical evaluation criteria included quality and co- comprehensiveness of the proposal, references and experience. Company qualifications, demonstrated understanding of the district needs. And based off of that initial technical um evaluation, the scores ranged from a low of thirty-three to a high of forty-eight. And we established a cutoff point to move folks forward to come in and give us presentations of having to score points of forty or higher. And so those three firms were Infore, RPI Consultants, and Alight. So in February of twenty twenty four, the top three firms, Alight with Workday and Spry Point. RPI Consultants and Infore um participated in onsite proof of capabilities demonstrations. Each firm was given a five days to present their proposed solution following a scripted agenda. That included software application demonstrations and relevant discussions. Um after the thorough review of of the technical proposals or past performance, clarifications, demonstrations. Um cost negotiations and price, the evaluation co- um committee unanimously selected uh Alight. Solutions in cooperation with Workday and Spry Point. As the overall uh firm that represented the best value to the district. Um Alight scored a total of eighty-one points, RPI Consultants scored sixty-three points, and Infore scored fifty-nine. Points. Just to show you a little bit about our relationships between um the three vendors that we're asking you to award contracts for. Alight Solutions is going to be the implementer of the Workday solution. Um and Workday is the ERP system, and then Spry Point um is the utility billing. Um customer information system supplier who will also be doing their own implementation. So the implementation timeline, this is a thirty-month implementation timeline that is slated to begin October of twenty twenty four. And the project follows a multi-phased implementation approach with phase one being the Spry Point implementation. The duration is gonna last about a hundred and thirteen weeks, um with a uh go-live date of December third of twenty twenty six. And then a stabilization and support period of fif- sixteen weeks following that. The phase two will be the Workday Human Capital Management Payroll and Financials. That's slated for a hundred and two-week um implementation period with a go-live date of June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty six. And a stabilization support period of twelve weeks, and then the final phase, phase three, is the Workday Financial Planning. Which is a duration of twenty-eight weeks, um and includes a stabilization support um of four weeks. And so the total overall cost for this project, including the twenty percent. Implementation project contingency and a ten-year follow-on software subscription fee is approximately twenty-two million dollars. So at this point of the presentation, um are there any questions that I can answer?
So far, so good.
No, yeah, no, good, good presentation. I mean, we, I know we went through a lot of this at the last, was it the last meeting? I think it might have been the last.
Uh July twenty-ninth.
Yeah, so um we had.
July ninth.
July ninth, yeah, which was our last meeting, so I think we had a pretty good foundation on this. On the necessity of of this and also the vetting for the these companies. I mean, I expensive and disruptive, but it sounds like we need it. So, yeah. Is there a motion to approve this, this guy?
Here comes the tech, the tech.
Make a motion approved.
Yeah, you, no, we heard, it's like the one-two punch, yeah, I think we've gotten it, yeah, it's gonna happen. Did we, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from John Aguilar, any other discussion? Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Still wants to talk.
No. I can't log in on my uh.
It will be handled right away. They just thank you obviously for approving this, this has been a huge effort. And uh we have a great team, obviously great leadership from uh Mr. Barrett and staff. Uh there there's one clarification I wanna make because this is a public uh meeting, obviously, is that our data is accurate. Uh it is hard to get to it, but uh we go through gray lengths to ensure that our data is accurate, our building is accurate. It's just the system is rich end of life, so I wanna make that clarification.
Yeah, no, I get it, well, having to do double entries and things like that makes it makes it difficult.
And staff grows, you know, we have a great uh quality assurance process to make sure that whatever we provide, including our building is accurate, so thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the.
And thanks again for approving this important uh BA.
Thanks, Louis. Uh alright, so on to uh written communications, we had the item on there on the uh online that everyone can view.
I did distribute a revised uh version that you should have that in the attachment, so there was an additional one that came in on Monday. Um that was added to that, you had the previous one. It's under the PowerPoint.
Thank you. Onto uh board general comments, why don't we start with Director Nelson?
Um no, no comments, uh uh actually, yeah, I I will make a comment, I I couple growers in the Mecca East Valley are. Are uh saying that deliveries on the weekends are a little erratic, so um you know, this is a time of year. Um that a lot of new plantings are going in the ground for the fall crops, so um. Uh I don't know if that's related to some of the um vegetation cleanup that we did or whatnot, but no, the the waters. the the water's clear, but uh just a couple of comments from growers, so just to reiterate um and you know, not to not to, you know, make a big deal out of it, but it's a it's a real critical time for for growers as they put their transplants in um real crop-wise. So uh that was it, and then um I guess I just heard this morning that Christopher Anderson, who was uh at Aqua, um a um advocate uh for um Aqua is left for the Cal Chamber, so it's kinda going from uh the public sector over to the uh private side of of things, so just interesting uh movement, so. That's, those are my comments.
Thank you.
No comments.
No. Gosh, I wanna have a comment, but a lot of things to say. I don't know if I want to say them. Uh I'll I'll pass on the comments also. Um do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Onto our meetings. Uh Director Estrada, looks like you have the first four on the list.
Um yeah, the first one is our uh bi-monthly now, bi-monthly uh meeting where we talk about some of the consolidation projects out there in the in the East Valley. Um I believe this was the first one we had on Zoom. So that went, that went nicely. It uh we went through it pretty quickly, and uh so I think we wrapped up like in thirty minutes. It was it was good. It was good, good and efficient. A good meeting, a lot of good progress, um a lot of uh highlights on the big Avenue sixty-six pipe that we're working on there. And then the next one. I I I don't uh did Director Aguilar, did you report on this one already, or is this?
I don't believe I have.
So yeah, I believe I was, I was there participating by Zoom. I think you were there in person. This this was the one in Imperial, right?
Yes.
Yes, so so yeah, I I was there. Um I believe we took a vote on the was this the one with with the new installation of the officers, or is that? Yeah? Okay, so uh that was the the main thing on at this meeting. There was a a vote for uh new officers, and so I stayed on as uh vice chair of of the authority and um Director Docstatter from IID is the new chair now. And that that's about uh as much as I think most of the conversation went like. The the other thing that that is brewing up, and I had made comment at the at the board meeting, is that I'm aware that the county of Riverside uh is probably about to head out to Sacramento here pretty soon, if if not, if they haven't done it already. But I believe they're having what they're calling a workshop over two days to talk to um natural resources on the North Lake Pilot Project. We have known for some time now that the original project as as it was defined in the in the agreement that, so we had the twenty million dollars. We created a project for it. It became the North Lake Project. Um the cost of that of of that project has probably increased significantly, so so the budget question is something that needs to get resolved. Uh there might be some other uh things that that need to get resolved, but but that seems to be a a a meeting that is only happening between the county and uh and the state, and and I did just express some comments that I um thought that other directors uh should be uh invited to the meeting, being that it is a Salt and Sea Authority project and not necessarily a county project, and for whatever reason, it seems that uh the county has kinda taken over the direction of of that project, and so those are just general comments that I've made, uh but it looks like there wasn't much interest from any of the other uh maybe directors to to make that trip, and so I think it's gonna be left on a more of a staff-to-staff uh type of conversation, which which might be good anyway, so that's about it.
I would just add, um yeah, thank you, Vice President. I um I would just add that we did get an update from Arassio Gonzalez, who is our state lobbyist, on the budget situation and um uh the bond issue in November does contain a hundred and seventy million set aside for the Salt and Sea, but that is subject to annual budget uh authorization, so uh whether or not that gets approved ultimately, we'll we'll see by um by any action that would be taken by the state. Also, there is ten million dollars in that hundred and seventy, which is set aside for the Salt Sea Conservancy, but the government, the legislation that would authorize the implementation of the conservancy has been held back by the governor. He has some concerns about it, mostly around cost, so the um uh the bill has until the end of this month to be reintroduced, and if it doesn't, then it's dead. So just wanted to have that.
Yeah, and then to add on top of that, there is, there was no specific earmark for the Salt Sea Authority as there has been in the past. As I mentioned, the twenty million dollars that we're using for the North North Lake Project, that was a a direct earmark in the budget for the Salt Sea Authority. It seems that all of the money that's made, been made available for Salt and Sea is all going to go to the State Natural Resources Agency, and then and then they will uh appropriate that money. Um the ten million, I think, can either be used for the conservancy, or it can be used for Salt Sea Authority, I think is what I had heard. But it's all gonna be controlled by the Natural Resources Agency.
Okay, um that gets us to the August fifth. Oh, we haven't done that one yet. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead with that, twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah, I just uh had a meeting with staff. Um I wanted to become more fa- familiar with this uh making conservation of uh California Way of Life. I had kinda read the big article on is it Cal Water? What's that big one? That Cal Water? And and I think there was some stuff that came out in the um LA Times, and I just wanted to hear more about um how it's impacting us. There was uh that article on the Desert Sun also where it gave different um targets for different uh water districts, and um I think we're in good shape, so just wanted to get more more information on it.
Good, okay. Yeah, then August fifth, we had the uh Agua Caliente Principals Meeting. We'll go into more detail on that in closed session, but I would say in general, um the little football is getting moved a little closer to the goal line. So then um August twelfth, actually, yeah, was it yesterday, uh Desert Valleys Builder Association, I attended that by Zoom. Pretty standard fare there. Um they like to, they like to get involved in the local elections, so partly to, I think, push their message and partly to help vet candidates, but uh we talked some about that. Couple of other meetings to add. Uh Vice President Estrada and I were both on, we had a pre-meeting for um what turned out to be a useful exercise, getting uh getting aligned with DWA on the Agua Caliente um on my one point in particular. And so we had a pre-meeting with our team on the twenty-ninth, and then we had a um these are both Zoom, and then we had a uh actual meeting with DWA and our team on the thirtieth of July, so just add those in. Any others? Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple. Um so on August first, um met with um California Farm Water Coalition, uh met with Gina Docstetter from IID, Greg Johnson uh from Northern California and coalition staff, and we're talking about um um funding um and dues uh within the coalition. Uh that's a kind of a hot topic right now, and uh so discussion there as well as two other meetings that that we talked about. Uh I'm on the bylaws committee, so we're what's happening is we we have a number of public agencies that are funding the coalition um on a per-acre basis, and uh then we have uh other constituent groups that are helping to donate and fund. It's a nonprofit, and so um yeah, within the bylaws, we wanna uh and I wanna ensure that um voting-wise, that the public agencies have a a stronger foothold on on voting uh and a bigger voice uh in that, so uh that it's not diluted by those who are contributing, but that um may have some votes. So that's that's the issue there. So on actually July twelfth, uh we had a bylaws committee meeting that I forgot to mention last month. And then uh follow-up to those draft documents um on August seventh, um had bylaws discussion, so uh that's what's happening.
Thank you. Others?
You added both the twenty-nine and thirty.
Yeah, we did. I had one, you know, I I never have um mentioned this, but um it was useful enough that I think I probably should. Um I I chair the water committee at Western Growers, and we had a committee meeting on July twenty-third. And um you know, it's an interesting group, and you think about people that come to talk to our group. It's it's all different than some of the others, and and uh anyways, this particular meeting, one of the agenda items was that we had a update on the Colorado River in the post-two thousand twenty-six situation, and uh we had uh an attorney from Arizona, who whose name I don't remember, and um and Jeff Kitelinger from IID um in giving presentations on kind of the unity of the lower basin states and what's likely to happen when the Bureau needs to figure out, you know, how to go forward. And um I just thought it was a really good presentation, and um and I think that that Jeff adds a dimension to IID that's really beneficial to the to the whole, I mean, probably the IID, but to the whole discussion, yeah, the lower basin unity. I think it's really, really, I was very impressed. Anyways, we'll add that on there, too. Uh is is there a motion to uh approve per diem as reported?
I'll make a motion.
All second.
All in favor, say aye. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. Um the weather's just been fantastic here um recently. Um unfortunately, our our troops, our crew have survived and performed very well. Uh we have two COVID uh cases that I am aware of, and that's all I've got today, sir.
So we never really talk about how they're doing. I mean, I hope they're, I hope they're gonna make a recovery from their COVID. I know we can't HIPAA or whatever, but doesn't seem to be as urgent as it used to. Paxlovid, right? Uh Counsel Report.
Yes, I will pass today with a long list of items you still have to address in closed session.
We do have a big closed session. Do we have any departmental reports on that note?
I don't see anybody stepping forward now that Luis is done with his. I I think we're okay.
Good. So at this time, the board recessed into closed session to consider items twelve A through H. And we will reconvene to report out after the closed session. We are reconvened in open session, and we do have an item, reportable item from closed session. Jeff Preys can handle it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, on items twelve B and C on a motion by Director Aguilar and a second by Vice President Estrada. At a vote of five to zero, the board took action to direct staff and legal counsel to opt out of the proposed class action settlements for items B and C and to proceed with the appropriate paperwork. That was the only reportable action.
Thank you. All right, and with no further business, we are adjourned.